Good evening. And... Mine's on, yeah. Good evening. And welcome to the school committee meeting of August 14th, 2024. Members of the public may listen and watch the school committee meeting via live stream at www.sandwichtv.org and the Sandwich Community TV Education Channel 8. We will start with the present pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First item will be public forum. Just a little reminder as we start off the new academic year and school committee season, all regular and special meetings of the school committee shall be open to the public. Executive sessions will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The school committee desires and encourages individuals to attend its meetings so they may become better acquainted with the operations and the programs of our local public schools. In addition, the committee welcomes the opportunity to hear public comment. Public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals and the school committee. It is an individual's opportunity to express an opinion on issues within the school committee's authority. Does anybody wish to be heard at public comment? Sir, if, I hope you've signed in and can take a seat. And sir, just in reminder to everyone that we've adopted the town select board's approach to time for public comment, and please try to restrict your comments to five minutes. Five minutes. Thank you. Go ahead.
Hello. My name is Victor Viola. I live in the town of Sandwich. Addison and Joseph are Heather and I's children. And I just kind of, we've been going over this for the last four months, our issue, issues with bullying and harassment and everything. And we've been working with the school and we had a meeting today with Principal Nelson's, her and her team, and she, we went over everything that she was going to present today, and it would definitely exceed our expectations. There was a ton of hard work put into it. I could tell a lot of work was put into it, so we were very grateful, happy, and excited. And we hope you guys will be excited with what's presented today too from that. We just, it was exciting. So it was, it was nice to see a positive, like to see this kind of come to fruition from the start to now. So we just have our full support and it's awesome, so I'm excited for you guys to hear. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to be heard at public comment? Seeing no one wishing to come forth, I will close the public comment. The next item on the agenda is donations. The first is Sandwich Elementary PTA to Oak Ridge Basketball Court.
So this is something that's really exciting to come to fruition. This is a donation from our elementary PTA from money that was raised during the 2019-2020 Booster-a-thon, a total of $15,690.73 for the express purposes of building an outdoor basketball court at Oak Ridge. The great news is, after your vote accepting it, we've already commenced the construction. We have a local company, MGH Paving, doing the work as we speak, and we anticipate by the end of next week that outdoor basketball court will be completed.
Can I have a motion to accept the donation of the Oak Ridge Basketball Court?
I make emotionally accept the donation of $15,690.73 with, from the Sandwich PTA for the purposes of building an outdoor basketball court at Oak Ridge.
Can I have a second? Second, Christine, any discussion? All in favor of accepting the donation, say aye.
Aye.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. It is unanimous, seven zero, and thank you very much for that donation. The next donation.
The next donation is from a nonprofit here on Cape Cod known as Hopeful Outreach of Cape Cod to all of the Cape and Islands districts. They donate in July a whole bunch of school supplies for families in need, including backpacks, various school supplies such as rulers, binders, notebooks, folders, dividers, and so on. We have taken stock of these in Central Office and we will be disseminating them to families directly.
Can I have a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the gift or the donation of school supplies as discussed, totaling 65 kits. There's not a dollar amount associated with it from the Hopeful Outreach of Cape Cod to be distributed to students of Sandwich Public Schools.
Second. Second by Danielle, motion made by Kevin. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous to accept that donation, seven zero. Thank you very much. The next donation.
This is a small donation, but it's a very kind donation. It is four yard signs, two and two, two for Forest Dale, two for Oak Ridge. We've got a terrific business here in town, Coastal Roots. They're a landscaping company. They did all of the work in front of Forest Dale in that front card garden courtyard, completely gratis. We figured, hey, the least we could do is just let our families know who did this work. So my assistant, Vicki, contacted this company to have these signs placed out in front of both of the gardens, and J&amp;J did not charge us. They gave us the signs for gratis, so.
Can I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept the four yard signs that were gifted by J&amp;J Sign Company as discussed.
Second by Tracy, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Looks like unanimous, seven zeros. Thank you very much to J&amp;J Sign Company, Joe and Jackie Scott. This next donation.
So the next donation is a very special one, probably the most special one of this evening. It is a donation of $600 to go for classroom supplies and materials for Ms. Amy Baxter's second grade classroom. And I'm going to ask this student to come up here. She is incredible. I'd like all of you guys to meet Carol Elizabeth Lawson. Carol is a rising fourth grader at Oak Ridge, and over the last year, she wrote a book that she's going to share with you. The book is called My Book About Dyslexia. And Carol wrote this book to kind of share with her classmates, her experience, some of her challenges, but ultimately her successes in having dyslexia. And please correct me if I'm wrong, Carol, but during the course of the year, from selling and also, I'm lucky enough, I've got a signed book, doing book signings, she was able to raise the $600 that's being donated tonight. So share with us whatever you'd like to say, Carol. Or just pass out the book.
My book about dyslexia?
Mm-hmm. Did you like reading the book?
Yes. It also makes me feel proud every single day.
Proud every single day. And what do you think is the most important thing about the book?
Um, I liked the page where it says how it makes me feel about dyslexia, and my favorite line is, "I'm, I'm more than dyslexia."
Hmm. I think that's a really, really important lesson, right?
Yes.
That's pretty great.
Um, till February to like the last week of school.
And did you stay inside at recess sometimes and work on the book?
Every Wednesday I would stay inside.
Yeah, that's great. With the help of Ms. Baxter?
Yes.
Yeah? That's great.
She's all right, isn't she?
She's a pretty good teacher, right?
Yes.
Did she help you a lot with your reading?
Yes. Also, I think she helped a lot with when it's like the word problems in math.
Oh, and those can be tough, huh?
Right.
Yeah.
Do you like word problems?
Yes, but I like reading better and I also like doing division better.
Okay.
Did anyone else help you with the book or helping you to, to work with the dyslexia with, did you have any other teachers?
Um, I worked with Ms. Tarantino or Mrs. Casino in the back room.
Okay.
Nice, nice. Carol, you're on TV, you know. So my question to you, or my question to you is, do you have anything that you really want everybody out in TV land? One thing to know about dyslexia.
Um, if you're going through dyslexia, I would say don't give up and just keep on trying.
That's awesome. Thank you.
It's a really important lesson. Really, really important.
Anything else you want to tell the committee or Dr. Joe?
Um, no.
All right. Did an excellent...
You get that every so often. Mom, is there anything that you'd like to share? I mean, thank you so much for bringing Carol and, and helping tell this story because I think it's a remarkable story.
Thank you for having us. We wanted to mention that since our initial count, we've gotten even a few more donations, so it's actually $700 now. And we're just very grateful for the support that she got from all her teachers and her family and friends that showed up for our book party. Mr. Dentino came and was really a big supporter and encourager of this project, and of course, Ms. Baxter, who helped Carol write the book. And we also wanted to share with Ms. Baxter's class Ben and Emma's Big Hit, which was written by Gavin Newsom, who also has dyslexia, and included it in his, about the author, and inspired Carol to include that in her own book.
Great.
Yes.
That's terrific. Can I have a motion to accept this incredible donation and gift from our student, Ms. Carol Lawson?
You certainly can. I make a motion that we, with great gratitude, and the recommendation that Mom and Dad take her out for ice cream, by the way, after this, accept the donation of now $700 for the purposes of Ms. Baxter's second grade classroom.
Second. Second by Danielle, all in favor?
Aye.
Seven zero, passes unanimous. Thank you so much.
I think we should just drop the mic and call it a night.
I know. That's ending on a positive note, that would be. Our next item is review and act on meeting minutes. The first are the regular business meeting minutes dated June 26, 2024.
Sorry. I'll make a motion that we approve the regular business meeting minutes dated 26 June 2024 as presented.
Bert, can you...
Usually it's a second.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Christine, discussion, go ahead, Bert.
Is that, is this, do I handle the right one here? That's the open session minutes on June, June 26. Right at the bottom, it says approve vote 601 and opposition by Mr. Fisher. Is 601 show a abstention or is...
That should be 610.
61, yeah, that's...
Zero is the abstention. The third number should be the abstention.
Okay. Apologize, Bert, the chair probably set it incorrectly and our minute taker took it as she heard it, so we'll make that correction.
I will amend my motion to approve the minutes as presented with the correction as mentioned by Mr. Fisher to correct the vote to reflect 601.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passed unanimous, seven zero. All right. The next are the minutes of executive session minutes of June 26, 2024.
I move that we approve the executive session minutes dated 26 June 2024 as presented.
Second. Second by Danielle, any discussion? All in favor?
Just a quick question on that. So the roll call vote that is midway through the page, it says seven oh, but five people are listed.
Oh, you know, I think that's edited now.
From a previous one.
Yeah, yep. It went in, it was edited. I'll pull it up, yeah.
I'll amend the motion that we will add the names to include all seven, but otherwise approve the minutes as presented.
We have a second of the motion as amended.
Second.
Second by Christine, any discussion, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seven zero, passes unanimous.
And we need to collect those, so if you could pass them this way.
I did it, yes, before it was printed.
She already collected them, right?
Final set of minutes, the school committee workshop notes dated July 30th, 2024.
I move that we approve the, the notes of the school committee workshop of July 30th, 2024 as presented.
Can I have a second? Second by Christine, any discussion of the meeting notes? No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All approved. Seven zero is the vote on that. Thank you. Next item is correspondence and announcements. Danielle?
I just have a quick announcement. The CPAC Special Ed Parent Advisory Council is going to hold an ice cream social to kick off the school year. So I'm passing on info from Mary Kate Lott. It's going to be Thursday, August 29th at 6:30 PM at Shipwreck Ice Cream. So all are welcome to attend.
Thank you very much. Any other announcements, correspondence? Seeing none? All right, superintendent's update.
All right, good evening again, everybody. First thing is, kind of in line with our policy on school choice, plus also state regs, basically saying in, in May, in the spring, we kind of do our initial announcements as far as how many openings per grade that we have, and then we do a lottery usually in that first week of June, and then we revisit as the summer enrollment ferrets out. So we are planning on doing a second lottery for some additional openings that are, that are available right now. That second lottery will be this coming Monday, the 26th, at 10:00 AM. I'm sorry, a week from Monday, the 26th, I don't want to rush summer away. The current openings that we will have will be in grade three, there's three openings, grade five, six openings, and then in grades seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11, all six openings. Okay? The second piece of business, which is a little more substantial, a little more serious than the school choice issue, is what has come to light, no pun intended, with regard to the middle high school baseball field lights, okay? As I've shared with you via email, we, we, on August 1st and 2nd, we did a study of, kind of an engineer's study. We had an outside firm known as SAFE, which stands for something like stadium and field evaluation, do an evaluation of the baseball field lights. For the purposes of kind of looking at the feasibility of, could we convert those traditional lights to something like LED? What would the wiring have to look like and so on? Unfortunately, there are some real significant issues with those lights. And if you've ever seen them, it's believed that they are the original 1976 lights. There's considerable rust there and erosion. And so we're talking about eight lights that go around the baseball field, and then there's an additional six that go around the softball field. The lights, as you can see there, are 100 feet tall, at least the baseball field ones are. They're made from 10 10-foot sections that are stacked on top of each other. So I, I put here, you have in the packet the full report, the evaluation report, but in looking at it, as you could see in the executive summary, there is substantial, what they refer to as pitting corrosion on these lights, and the concern is really along the seams of where these 10-foot sections connect with each other. And some you can see with, with the naked eye, but, you know, concerns about, you know, the structural integrity of the welds. In some cases, there's actual separation of the welds. So that's a significant concern. There's also concerns around the bases, I think as the, the report states, in three of the lights. So at the base of the poles, there's a total of these, eight of these anchor rod bolts and nuts. On three of them, three of the poles, three of the nuts are missing. There are situations where the anchor rods are missing the locking devices. So I think unfortunately, this is something that has happened over years and hasn't been maintained properly. As the report also cites, and, you know, the bases have some concerns, there's evidence of some water damage, there's definitely evidence of, in some cases, cracking of the cement bases and so on. So as you can see in the cover letter and the executive summary of that report, the recommendation is to take them out of service as soon as possible. So in, in thinking about the health and safety concern regarding this, we want to move on this ASAP. So as I also put in the packet, Chris and his team got a estimate from a firm out of Chelsea that actually does this work. It'll be approximately $82,000 to have all 14 of those poles removed. As I said in the background notes, and this is one development since I typed those up, that firm is not on the state contracting bid list, so we had to get a waiver. Both Chris and Bud Dunham authored a letter that went to the state agency that's in charge of procurement. We have gotten the waiver, and right now, the timetable is to commence the work on removing those poles, starting on Monday, the 26th. The goal would be to have that work done prior to the start of classes on Tuesday, September 4th. We're cognizant that fall athletics begin. The game plan would be for any work, for any students that will be practicing, that all of those practices will be in the upper field or offsite, that we don't even want kids in DeCanto Stadium while that work is going on. So Chris, I don't know if you have anything to add to kind of that overview of where we are in the project?
Nice to see you again. Yeah, this report was, you know, not something I really wanted to bring forward, but we have to get these poles down. Any sustainable wind over 30, 40 miles an hour could possibly take these poles down, according to this report. So it's, we're, we're moving forward. We're, we're going to take these down as soon as possible. They'll be down for a while, and the next phase will be, are we putting poles back up? That's another discussion for another day. Other than that, I think our only, you know, the 26th is the scheduled day, but like everything else we do outside, it's weather permitting. So if it's raining, I'm not putting 130-foot crane up there with the guy swinging in a basket. We won't be doing it on windy days or rainy days. So anything over 20 miles an hour, they're not allowed to go up. So we'll work on that as quickly as possible. Hopefully we get days like this, like today, so we can start taking these down.
This is just one more example of the neglect of deferred maintenance over many, many years.
Correct.
I, I as a school committee member, a nurse, a parent, I appreciate the fact that, for whatever reason, you decided now was the time to take a look at these to address this major safety issue.
And believe it or not, and again, the, what precipitated having this study done, and Chris and I started this conversation maybe in March or April or even before that?
Say April, yeah.
What would it take to have an engineering study and kind of the desire, knowing, and I may be off by a year, but those lights haven't been operable since 2010. And it is a shame that this is an opportunity to have night baseball, night softball, to potentially, you know, not only have night games for our kids, but also a potential revenue source. You know, I was saying before the meeting, I joined an over 55 softball league in Falmouth, and, you know, the, the schools rent out the fields to, you know, leagues and so on. So, you know, ultimately, you know, we've got this huge list of projects that we need to prioritize, and I understand, you know, inside our schools and things that directly speak to health, safety, and well-being of our kids are first and foremost, but I think this is also an opportunity moving forward. You know, it turns out, again, it's believed that these poles are from 1976. I don't think it should be a surprise that they're now 48 years old and we have this issue. I think it also came out from the firm that they used a material, correct me if I'm wrong, called weathering metal that isn't necessarily appropriate for coastal climate, and therefore the rate of corrosion and erosion due to the salt air also accelerated their demise.
Correct.
We gonna get any money back for the steel? There's a lot of steel up there.
We didn't ask for that. I'm just, we're trying to get it offsite as quick as we possibly can.
Okay. Because I had a ham radio tower taken down that was very small compared to this, and I got about $400 for it, and it wasn't even taller than this building. So this looked like there's thousands of dollars of steel in there, and some of it's rusted, but they do tend to melt it. So I would, I would ask that question.
Sure.
Danielle?
I had a question about the, under the exclusions, I was just kind of reading through the estimate about the removal of the vegetation, the nests. That could be an additional cost. I know you and I had stood there this spring looking at that osprey nest.
So I did talk to Dave DeCanto about that, and he told me I had, JJ Burke had the drone. We sent a drone up the other day to check that nest out. There's nothing in the nest, so as long as there's no eggs or hatchlings in the nest, we can remove the nest.
You can remove it.
Now, now, now it's like, and I asked Dave about this too, is, do we see if we can get somebody that can put a pole in, that can put a pole in the nest somewhere and put a camera on it so we can watch it, you know? Thinking, trying like... Thinking, trying like the future, like would, could we do that and have it live streamed to the high school and to the elementary school so the kids can watch birds?
Mm-hmm.
So that's something I'm thinking about doing too.
Great idea. Yeah, yeah, okay.
Any other questions or comments from Mr. George or Dr. Joe? Kevin?
Just obviously, I mean, they're 48 years old. It's unfortunate where, where we're at, where we're at, but I think, you know, get them down as soon as we can. Just want to clarify, this does not impact any of the lights for DeCanto Stadium though. It's only the baseball field.
Correct.
Thank you.
I do have a report that we are going to check the DeCanto lights also. Any sustainable wind over 70 miles an hour, you should have an engineering report done.
And how old are the lights at the DeCanto? Kind of lost track.
Um, I think they're 14 years old now.
14, so, in a while, and I guess maybe, I'm sure you'll stay on it, regular schedule of safety checks.
Yeah, I've scheduled the engineers to come back out as soon as they can.
Awesome.
Okay, so the plan is, so they're going to remove, take down the lights, remove them. We hope that's going to be a week, but weather permitting.
Right.
Okay. Um, and then we're going to readdress, get some estimates on new lights, new lighting, up-to-date lighting.
Yeah, I do have one right now and they're the, they're the company that does majority of your lighting in this country. Um, so I have a good idea of what the number's going to be.
Can you share that?
Yeah, you're, you're sitting down.
Well, I mean, I know, I gulped at the 81,000 just to remove it.
Yeah. Um, you're looking at possibly around $835,000 to put up all brand-new lighting on that field, both fields.
Both fields. Thank you. And are the tennis court lights, are those affected too? Are those newer or?
No, those are old lights also.
Those are old as well, yeah.
Those are a little different. Those are a galvanized aluminum kind of, and a casing, so they're more weather-friendly for this environment. But again, those all should, should be now checked because, you know, sustainable winds and we are in that season again of heavy winds that we should probably check all these out.
Chris, I think that, and I may be way off on this, but it seems to me that the lights were last, at the tennis courts were last changed at the time it was resurfaced. The tennis courts were resurfaced. So that was largely undertaken with support from the boosters at that time. That still predates my kids in school, so at least pre-1999, if that's correct.
Pretty close. Um, yeah, I'd agree with that.
Okay. Any more, any more comments, questions on this? We will revisit the resurrection of new lights at some point. Thank you very much to both of you.
And then, um, the last piece under my update is, um, you know, our monthly budget report, but seeing for inclusive of June, it really represents the closeout for the FY '24 budget. Michelle?
Yep, you have the June report in front of you. Um, we're all balanced out and we gave nothing back to the town. We spent every dollar. Some highlights of the budget are our utilities came in, 191,000 under budget, which is a good thing. Tuitions of 1,250,000 were, were paid by Circuit Breaker. And we did, um, manage to do about $650,000 worth of facility and maintenance, repairs and upgrades in this budget. So, any other questions?
Uh, just a question about the wing school. So should this be the final expenses for the wing school on this budget?
I hope so.
It better be, right?
Actually, I think we were paid a couple of utility bills in July and August until everything was closed out over there, but they were minimal amounts of money.
Okay, okay, so this figure, we should not see this anymore?
We should not see any more wing bills, especially since it's gone.
Be better, I know.
And just as we, you know, it won't be long before we're into FY '26 budget preparations, that we scrutinize where we ended in the various accounts to see if a little supplementation is necessary in the next round. I continue to be concerned about athletics and transportation. And if it's going to continue to go up and we continue to sport athletics in this district, then I think the budget should be closer to reflect what the actual expenditures will be. Any other comments about budget?
Um, you mentioned the 650,000 in maintenance and improvements. I know we accepted earlier the donation for Oak Ridge, but we never really touched on, um, the plan there or what's also going on, um, right next to those old bas- those, those old light towers. I don't know if you want to touch on the, the courts and if, you know, either you got it or if Chris wants to come back.
So what we're planning into, uh, it was actually intentional because we do follow this school committee meeting calendar of events that our former chair, you know, came up with. Um, but no, in all seriousness, uh, we're planning on, on April, uh, April, August 28th, two weeks from tonight, kind of doing a summary of all of the projects that we've did that were part of our FY '25 operational budget, i.e. the new flooring that's being put in, the debt exclusion projects, like the HVAC projects, but also some of the additional projects. For example, as Kevin's alluding to, uh, the high school basketball court being redone. And we'll do some pictures and some kind of show and tell of some of that work.
Okay. I'll, I'll wait with bated breath. Thanks.
It's going to look really, really nice.
Okay, now we move into old business and, uh, follow-up on the community outreach conversation. Joe, do you want to set this up for us?
Sure. If you recall, during the second half of the, um, the workshop that we had on July 30th, we discussed, um, really the need to do kind of a new comprehensive, um, three-to-five-year strategic plan for the district. And usually that strategic plan process starts with gathering of data and specifically what you do is you put out a comprehensive survey to different stakeholders. But then we also talked about potentially doing focus groups where we would have somebody who would be a facilitator and we would touch base with different groups, different parent groups, but also trying to hit different groups internally, different groups of staff members, but also community members and particularly folks that we don't typically interact with. And we talked about, you know, folks that don't have any children in the schools, maybe some of our senior citizens within the community and so on. So part of, for lack of a better term, the homework assignment and, and one thing that I forgot is during these focus groups, maybe having a couple representatives from each school committee to kind of sit in and kind of take notes and, and get perspectives. So, uh, part of this follow-up was thinking about, you know, what are some groups that we should be looking at or, you know, targeting and, and getting their viewpoints about what's going well in our school district, but what are some of the areas of need?
So we can start, if you did your homework, you must have this list, this swimming around in your brain. So I think if we can just kind of put something out there and, um, we'll capture it in the minutes and if we need to refine that list and compress categories and whatnot, we can do that. Remember, there are seven of us and there are a lot of potential stakeholder groups and we want to be as inclusive as possible and we want to be able to get this done within a reasonable couple of week, three-week period. So the floor is open. Let's collect information. I sent the document just as my personal brainstorming and not, that should restrict anything, but just to kind of get the conversation moving.
Daniel?
Well, one thing we had talked about at the workshop was about the Center for Active Living, maybe, um, Dr. Marusjak having a section in the newsletter every month, giving an update, what's happening in our schools. Um, I was reading, and Christine, you might be able to answer this too, about, um, in Mashpee, Southport, the condo community there, what are they called, the Southport Falcons? And they collaborate with the students at the high school. And I, I hear it's a huge success.
They do a lot of volunteering and fundraising and lots of different.
Scholarships, there's.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, if we could interact, I know last year I had spoken to a few constituents in town and we talked about, um, the Center for Active Living, we had just opened and somebody had a great idea, which I wish it, it came to be, but hopefully this year, of having a senior, senior-to-senior cornhole tournament, just to get the senior class interacting with, with adults at the Center for Active Living. For some, just for one instance, or maybe doing some coffee hours or, um, also the public safety and our fire departments, our police departments, do we have any sort of internship in place for, you know, students that are looking into the criminal justice programs or fire safety? I think that's a great avenue to go, to go down and, you know, it, it may open up a door for a student down the road to become employed in Sandwich, keep families in Sandwich. I won't take the floor. I have a few other ideas, but we can talk later.
Is there anybody else?
Well, while we're thinking just the Center for Active Living, um, I think what we talked about were a couple of different things in addition to the ideas you mentioned of figuring out, you know, what are the best ways for people to communicate, number one? So having a variety of options so that if we're talking about the Center for Active Living, that there's a Zoom chat, that there's something in person with coffee and snacks and maybe there's also, there's a lot of people, senior citizens in and out of that building, that there's some kind of survey or Dropbox.
Sure.
That, I think, could work really well, um, to get information. There's also a board of directors for the Center of, um, Active Living and that might be a group of people to generate ideas with as well as best ways to get feedback and learn more. So those were some things I was thinking about there.
Christine?
Um, another external group I had thought about was the Sandwich Mothers Club, which is kind of a future invested moms, um, for the most part. And then we don't have students on their surveys and I think tonight we have a unique situation, we are actually have students in the audience and are we surveying students on these same kinds of, would we, same kinds of questions about what, what we're doing right, what we're doing wrong, what we need to improve upon, you know, areas for growth? I think student voice is really important as, as I think on your list you have teachers and faculty, which I think is as important as well. Those are the people who are really living it day-to-day and can give us the, the true perspective of what's happening.
Kaylee?
Um, another stakeholder group, I know that the PTA, PTSA obviously overlaps with parents and students, but it may be worthwhile to meet with each of those groups individually just to kind of get their thoughts, their perspective. I know they kind of look at things from a different angle, so.
I think the PTA there, especially they have general meetings, I think that get a lot bigger turnout. I can tell you, um, knowing somebody in the PTSA, that's normally a pretty skeleton crew. But I would agree with you, at least give it a try. I think we need to think of different, um, maybe just have open forums where we have a night, you know, not, it's not teacher conference night, but it's, come talk to us. We're, you know, we can't have seven of us there, we have to have a, you know, less than a quorum and, um, it can't always just be coffee hours because people work. And, um, and while I like the idea of, I know Zoom might be easier, Zoom to manage sometimes can be a challenge if there's a large group. Um, maybe there can be some type of hybrid where people could listen into it, but, you know, and we have, we certainly have families that cross schools that have kids in potentially all three schools. Um, but, you know, you know, target, you know, we could have target at nights for each school, not that, not that they couldn't cross pollinate, but, and, you know, maybe not do it in the high school auditorium because that creates people looking at their phones, but, um, San till school or the Cal, the Cal has big meeting spaces where people can be more at a table and, you know, kind of hopefully make it a bit more interactive rather than somebody on a stage talking. So I think open forums hopefully get some people out. Obviously would require some very aggressive, um, outreach as far as notification, uh, information. Actually just, and this is off the top of my head, I've thought a lot about this, but I never really came up with great answers. I don't know if we can anyway tie this into or if we'd be too, it might be just too busy, so you can squash it if you want. Do we, do we connect it or do it some part of an, the school open houses?
I was thinking that too.
And maybe it works, maybe it doesn't, I don't know. Or we're there so that, you know?
Yeah.
As, we're, we're not stealing time from open house, but if people want to come talk, we had, had options there.
Another thing I thought of was the Chamber of Commerce. Do we attend one of their meetings? Um, or they do things breakfast hours, they do things after work and just, and listen in and see what they have to say. And now we're starting the Career Pathways Program. Is there a way that we can collaborate different businesses in town to, to incorporate students?
Last week, myself and Dr. Quinn, um, as we typically do on a monthly basis, um, Bud has a, it's referred to as the brown bag lunch at Oak Crest Cove of all the town's department heads and, you know, it's just, uh, to kind of share the news, to collaborate and so on. And during my portion of share, you know, I kind of shared, um, that this is what we were thinking and, you know, folks, you know, like the director of the Cal, uh, the new library director were very amenable to pushing the word out around surveys or around focus groups through their means of communication.
I also thought of, uh, a group that would comprise public health in the town, health department, uh, representatives of the healthcare community, particularly medical needs, behavioral health and substance-related types of issues. I think that's an important impact to get. There's a lot of rec and youth programming that happens that's not school-based and not town-based and that would be another good, uh, opportunity. Other community organizations, I couldn't remember what it was called, but it's, there's a sandwich something for families. There's a.
Partnership.
Partnership, okay. Other thing I thought about is, um, to include somewhere the mass, uh, the Sandwich Commission on Disabilities, that's a good one. It's a good opportunity. So I think the how, the other thing I think, thought about is that I would think we would want some similarity in the questions we ask so that we can compile the data in a way that gives us some direction. So, you know, three open-ended questions to kind of steer us where we want to go or however, um, so that everybody gets to answer in their own way, the same few questions. Anything else in terms of next steps?
I think next steps, what I will do is I will bring forward kind of an initial plan of, um, who, how we could, probably a loose schedule of how we could be doing this type of work through September and October. In all likelihood, probably having an outside facilitator to kind of call the group together. To your earlier point, Tracy, I think some of this work would be done live in person and a decent amount of it would be, also be done through Zoom and, you know, having flexibility as far as not all during the same time and so on. But for the 28th, you know, to kind of have a thumbnail sketch of what that would look for, I think the Google Doc that you put together is a great start as far as looking at the different stakeholder groups. And maybe what we could talk about is if we could get those established, who would be interested in kind of being the proverbial fly on the wall with, say, the Sandwich Partnership Group of Families or with, I think somebody put the Select Board in the FinCom or so
It's a lot of work, but it's exciting and I think personally, I think I was gratified that when we kind of planned out our object, our agenda for our workshop, these were the key areas. And during the workshop with Jim's involvement and Joe's, this is, we're going in the right direction. And I think I expressed at the workshop that this is very formal, very widespread. very formal, very widespread, intensive for the purpose of a plan at some point, but it might, some of these techniques will be a good model for regular, ongoing conversation with, with members of the community. Any other comments? We've got a work cut out for us, it should be exciting, we'll go on a listening tour, I think somebody else had a listening tour a few years ago, this is really important. Okay, next item, Sandwich Middle High School Student Family Handbook Changes, we need to vote on this, you recall this is a continuation of a discussion that we had in June.
So there's a few pieces here, you do have in your packet a document that kind of summarizes all of the changes specifically, and I, I can remember some feedback that occurred here at the table, specifically around definitions, I think we got some terrific feedback, specifically also from Heather and Victor, as the incident was playing out, just about in the student handbook, and specifically the section around bullying, that there were some places where it was opaque, and did not necessarily jibe with our bullying prevention and intervention plan. So some, some very good work has been done in this specific section with regard to, you know, it, it really was under a section that was entitled Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging, and I think there was some material in there with, that was somewhat superfluous. So we, it's been changed to Discrimination, Harassment, and Bullying, and to the earlier point, I think it's a little more user-friendly, graphically and content, where we're very specific in saying, hey, these are the definitions of harassment, discrimination, sexual harassment, and then, you know, I, I, I look at it through the lens of a parent as well, making it, you know, hey, how do I report discrimination or harassment, and what are the links to various forms that we have, what should I expect after contacting administration or submitting a form, and then, really, the pieces around bullying prevention and intervention, and making sure that they mesh with what we have in our intervention and prevention plan, but again, being a little more clear about definitions, what's bullying, what's cyberbullying, what is hazing? I think, Kevin, you brought up the point, that this is, this gray block here is also on our website, this is now also in the student handbook, of just kind of a very simple, concise definition of what exactly is bullying, and again, in the same light, what should I do if I see or experience bullying, links to the forms, and then, what should I expect after contacting administration or submitting the bullying reporting form? Additional verbiage here, again, mirroring what we have in our intervention and prevention plan, as far as investigation procedures and determinations has also been here. And then we also have links to our current district policy. As I said in the background memo, however, I do think we should convene in relatively short order, the Policy Subcommittee, to look at some current updates, we've gotten some updates from both MASC, but also our legal counsel with regard to bullying, but also, if you followed, there's a new set of changes to Title IX, which is the federal legislation that kind of speaks to sexual harassment. So there's some real specific pieces that we should look at as far as our district policy, and making sure that our three student family handbooks also have that alignment as well. So I think the point was made, it might have been made by you, Kevin, that handbooks are something that are a dynamic document, they're not static. I do think that these, this piece specifically here, that, you know, was a really, really important piece to open the school year with, these changes are very good, but I think there's also some additional pieces that Jeannie wants to share for the full consideration. So Jeannie?
That's right, so in addition to the Handbook on Bullying with the definitions and clarity and transparency that, that Dr. Joe just talked about, we're also going to implement changes to the Athletic Handbook. So the first piece of that is essentially encouraging a Good Samaritan Clause that wasn't in there prior, that's encouraging students to, to come forward and report if and when they're in the company of any kind of behavior that's threatening to another student, and when they witness something, to kind of have it explicitly stated in there with the subtext that, that we will obviously protect and maintain confidentiality with that. The second piece is to make mandatory all student athletes take three National Federation High School courses, one on social media, one on sportsmanship, and one on hazing prevention. And what's going to happen with that is they will not be able to compete in their first league competition unless they have successfully completed those three courses, so we can track that through our athletic system, and, and organize that with the coaches, and they can create the time and the space for, for student athletes to do that, whether it's at home, or whether it's on campus, but we, we 100% feel like that's a, that's a requirement to participate in extracurricular athletics.
Quick question on that, no objection to it, any idea how, what the time commitment is for those three courses?
So the estimation, is it, each one is about an hour? They are virtual, they're online, and again, like, depending on how each coach would like to approach it, they could either create the, the time for the student athletes to do it after school in a practice, or, or to assign it, but yeah, so it would be a total of three, estimated three hours.
Yeah, I mean, I know, at least the varsity are, you know, they do their tryouts before the start of school, if, if the earlier, these, this can be communicated to anybody who registered, all the better, so if the kids can do it essentially before Labor Day and school starts, it's just going to be one less thing as the busy school year starts, but completely support it.
The additional handbook changes are around honor roll, to, to bump up the high honor roll for an average of a 93 or above in all classes, from a 90 for high honors, and the same thing for an average of, an average between 83 and 92 for honor roll status, with, you know, not with a grade below 83.
What does, I, I know we don't use letter grades anymore, so, we, would you say an 83 would equate to in a letter grade system?
It's a B, a B.
Straight B.
It's a solid B.
So in college, it would be a 2.0 for their, it's passing, it's average or satisfactory. It's 3.0, yeah.
3.0, yeah, so it's a B, so 80, 81, 82 would be a B minus?
And that's honor roll.
That we're saying, we're, we're proposing that honor roll would be 83, a B, to a 92 average, and high honor roll would be the 93, which is a solid A, not an A minus average, so an A average for high honor roll.
Is that typical of other high schools? In terms of honor roll, I just don't know, that's why I'm asking the question.
I'm, I'm not sure.
In my previous district, it was exactly this.
You don't use letter grades anymore?
We do have the correlation for the students in power school, the students understand sometimes that, however, all of the information with academics in power school for grades are delivered in numbered.
Oh, so they're actual, so you know the exact number where they are?
That's right.
If you look at it, Bert, just because I have, you know, kids in the school, it'll, it'll say, I'll be nice to my kid, it says A, or C, or whatever, but underneath it'll tell you the percentage as well, so they're both represented there.
So in all grades, all classes, there are student learning outcomes, and there are criteria to meet those outcomes, so, I don't know how to say this delicately, being a college teacher not too long ago, we constantly, constantly fretted about grade inflation, and I'm sure your faculty have the same conversations, but having the outcomes, the criteria, the mastery is more clear in terms of the assessment, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Just to clarify, this is a change previously, was it 80?
Yes. 80 and 90.
So you raised the bar.
We would like to.
Yeah.
Just to go back to bullying for a minute, if a kid goes up to another high school kid in the cafeteria and says, give me your lunch, or I'll beat you up after school, is that, and he only does it once, that's not bullying?
That's a verbal threat, that, it, it could, it's a verbal threat which we would proceed with discipline, it's unacceptable behavior.
But it's not bullying, is that what you're saying?
If you look at the definition of bullying, it is.
No, I've seen the, and I have a concern about what happened last, last spring, about, and to me, that, the common old-school type, that really seemed like bullying, and so I'm not asking for a legal, I know what the legal definition is according to Massachusetts, but I, my concern is, I don't want to see that situation that happened last spring happen again, and so by classifying, one thing is bullying and harassment and, and various cases, to me, bullying is pretty bad, and harassment doesn't sound as bad, so that's, you know, I'm expressing an, an old-school opinion.
So I think your point is, there's different terminology using, used for different forms of unacceptable behavior, and I think we've, we've gotten to a place over the last at least 10 to 15 years, where there is a legal definition that drives our discipline, but there's also the vernacular of how people use that term, and I, and your point is well-made, Bert.
And I think this, this gray box is some of what caused the consternation last spring, seeing it as a progression of three steps, whereas I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, the intent of this is, some of this behavior is a continuum, it's not to say that you need all three in order to pursue any type of action, but at any of the steps along the way, it is not the way to treat people, and at any of the steps along the way, if it's reported, it will be investigated, and appropriate steps will be taken to keep the child safe.
Exactly.
And I understand the concept of progressive discipline, but when you go, when the example I cited about a kid threatening a kid about his lunch, that seems to go right to the top fairly quick, fairly quickly, and progressive discipline, I think might start if a kid calls another kid a name for, and starting there, but when you're going out and threat, and threatening a kid to take his lunch and, and hurt him, that's, that should go pretty up to, up to the top pretty quick.
I think that's what the principal said, she said it'd be a verbal threat.
To me, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, but to me, bullying sounds worse than a verbal threat, and.
Behave, I think, any incident that's reported, that one that you're speaking of, or any incident, will be investigated, based upon what the administrator finds from that investigation, it will be labeled something, whatever it is, but it will be investigated, and appropriate steps will be taken to keep that child safe, and appropriate steps, restorative justice, discipline will be placed upon the perpetrator. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Summer school?
Summer school. So this policy has existed for grades nine through 12, and our intent is to, to include our seventh and eighth graders in the policy, so essentially, we would like to be able to recommend summer school to seventh, middle schoolers and high schoolers if and when they were to fail a major subject for the year, and what that would look like would be working with each individual family, as we do in high school, to figure out if in-person learning or virtual learning is the best option, depending on the flexibility of the student and family over the course of the summer.
Does the student receive any credit for that, and?
Yep, so grades nine through 12, they, they do need, they do get credit recovery for courses they've failed, seventh and eighth graders do not receive credit, however, they do need the skills, which is why we're proposing this approach for skill building for courses they may not have been successful in during the academic year.
So the change here is you're expanding it to include seventh and eighth, and not just nine through 12?
That's right.
And if they refuse your recommendation and don't want to do summer school?
If they refuse the recommendation, they refuse the recommendation, we will work with the family in other ways, ideally to help support the student, but we're trying to, we're trying to set high expectations, we're trying to provide avenues for recovery, for skill development, we're trying to make education a priority for the school, and to make it really, really transparent, that if and when a student needs help, that we do have supports in place and opportunities in place for them to, to get the, the help they need.
Can you touch on, you had talked a little bit about last time around, the cost of summer school and credit recovery for students, and how that works?
Yep, so in the, in the high school, which is well-established and functioning, there is a cost for, varying cost for the programs, depending on which one the family chooses, per, I estimate would be like about $100 for, per course for the high schoolers, for the middle schoolers, and we currently have some middle schoolers in our summer scholar program, in our accelerated academy, which is run at the high school, those are morning programs, and those are free of, free of charge, and we do have some middle schoolers who have enrolled in a virtual program this summer, as, as an opportunity to try a pilot, if the student is on an IEP, or has, has an individual education plan, the special education department can help with that cost, if there is a cost.
And are, is tuition assistance available for families who are income-eligible for those kinds of?
Yes, yes, yep.
And I assume that for the high school, not for seventh and eighth grade, but for high school, if they fail a major subject area, refuse the summer services, then that's one more credit they still need to get before they graduate?
That's right, they're credit deficient.
Delayed graduation.
That's right.
Thank you.
At the seventh and eighth grade, are there digital programs, I'm not, I'm not assuming it's Khan Academy, but whatever it happens to be, so that stu, is there a platform where students could work at skill building, et cetera, their time is logged in?
Yes.
Their performance is logged in?
Yes.
So it's a flexible way for them to meet those needs, particularly if they're traveling in sports, vacations with families, or whatever?
And they're, they're really well-developed now since COVID, we actually have a lot of options where we can track the participation and the logging in, and we can offer support as well from afar, with, with kind of overseeing that participation virtually.
Then there was the piece around, I know Jeannie touched upon the cell phone usage of like. usage, electronic device, personal electronic device policy. So you also have in your packet the actual verbiage that is going to be included in the student family handbook with regard to, um, you know, the mobile phone, personal electronic device usage policy. And we're cognizant that this is a significant change, but we're also convinced that it's very much a needed and a necessary change. So Jeannie, if you want to touch upon what you have in these slides?
Sure. So this is, this is not just for cell phones, this would be any personal electronic device. So an iPad or a personal laptop, earbuds, smartwatches. And again, it's coming from a place where we are concerned about the research surrounding mental health with adolescents and technology. And so we would like to create an optimal learning environment that is free from distraction, encourage shared experiences, foster face-to-face interpersonal relationships, and, and essentially keep kids safe as well, because so much is happening with students on devices and phones and things like that. So cell phones, cameras, smartwatches, earbuds, headphones, laptops, iPads and other personal electronic devices are not to be in view utilized in school from 7:30 to 2:00 p.m. Again, we are providing each student with a one-to-one device, a Chromebook, that we have software on it that filters and alerts us to any kind of inappropriate content that we can kind of oversee. So we, so that's a security that we have in place. We don't have that security or the bandwidth to provide that on individual devices. So again, so we are providing students electronic access to technology that is protected. Just to explicitly state where it would be prohibited, it would be prohibited in class time, passing time, cafeteria, to encourage conversations and social, socialization, locker rooms, bathrooms, essentially during the school day. Exceptions would be for medical reasons, assistive technology outlined on an IEP, English language learning support, anything on a 504 that would rely on assistive technology. So those would be the exceptions where students would be allowed to use a personal electronic device. This was, this is just as of July 2024, seventy-six point nine percent of schools in the United States prohibit cell phone use during school hours in varying capacities, but that number is growing. Our surrounding neighbors as well are all moving to cell phone-free school days. And for really good reason, it comes from a place where we want to increase student engagement, we want to improve academic focus, we want to promote social interactions, reduce cyberbullying, increase privacy protection, enhance safety overall. What will happen if the phone comes out? First offense, the student brings the device to the main office, a parent guardian would be notified, and we would review the policy with the student and the family. And the student can collect the device at dismissal. Second offense, student brings the device to the main office, parent guardian would be notified, policy would be once again reviewed, a one-hour detention would be issued. The third offense, a student brings the device to the main office, the parent guardian is notified to come collect the device when convenient. Student would receive a two-hour detention and a recommendation would be made for the device to be left at home moving forward. If the student must bring the device to school, the student will be required to check in the device at the front desk every morning at 7:15 for the remainder of the semester. The student can collect the device daily at dismissal, and failure to turn in a device daily may result in further disciplinary action. So we understand this is, this will be a radical change for our upperclassmen, not so much for our middle schoolers, because we have had this policy, this exact policy in place for the past two years in the middle school. And we've done exactly that and call parents on the third offense and have them come and get the phone. And this, and it's, it's understood. So I think for the, for the upperclassmen, it's going to be the most challenging, but we have, we have data saying that we can do it and it works.
Any other questions?
So I think it's looking clear and it's so clear, it outlines it very well. Have there been discussions about after-school and sports and what that may or may not look like?
There have been, and the, the complexity with the after-school piece is the fact that we're transporting kids to various places on buses, and times are changing so fast with events based on weather. And so there's hesitation to implement a no-cell phone policy after-school hours based on the fact that families do need to communicate and students do need to communicate with their parents for pickup, drop-off, game changes, locations. So we have discussed it, but we, we, at this present time, we have not decided to, to move forward with any kind of an extracurricular policy.
I just had two pieces here. The, have we explored any more type of training for coaches in the fall, so we can be more cognizant on the buses, on the away games with the coaches?
Yes. So, so that's all, that's not in the handbook, but, but our athletic director, Sean Donovan, has worked with the MIAA too, and they have a whole series of courses for coaches to, to explore. So we, so he's, he's having that happen. And also, we are also going to add more communication between case managers for students on IEPs with the coaches, which was a piece that we, that we do need to develop and we need to make that stronger so that the coaches who are not teachers have an understanding of the profiles of their student athletes.
Okay.
Maintaining confidentiality, of course, but at least providing some information about how to best support their student athletes.
Great, great. And then the second piece was, if we, you know, approve this tonight, the changes and this Good Samaritan Clause type with the training for the students, is this something we can get on the Arbiter app, on the registration app for sports?
Absolutely.
Like immediately? Because it's a little outdated. We need to review that.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's right. And the Athletic Handbook too.
Yes, yes. If we could get this updated and add all of this as soon as possible, that would be great. Great. Thank you.
And I would think that in Mr. Donovan's conversations with coaches, that modeling behavior is really important, and they need to see and hear what's going on and not be in their own space, in their own device, when they're in the capacity of an advisor or a coach.
That's right. We, we do have a team of our peer leader core group, and they have also offered to meet with coaches to, to talk about. So we have a really strong internal group, and they've, they've also offered to work with them. And the admin team will be meeting with the coaches, which, which we, we have, we don't have a customary practice to do that, but like the preseason meetings to connect with them, meet them, and, and kind of set the tone for what we expect.
Any other questions?
I just, oh, I'm sorry, Kayla. Go ahead.
Um, just kind of piggybacking off of that a little bit, yeah, just the suggestion that would it be possible to, as part of that coach training, kind of encourage them to have like an unofficial, like cultural expectation that it's essential-only communication on the buses? And you just kind of basically teaching coaches to, hey, we're going to make sure that there aren't clusters of kids just all huddled around a phone, and that's something that coaches can know to be, or anyone who's, you know, transporting students to have that be something that is in their cross-check and that they're actively trying to, to work against and said that that's, that's not what we're going to do.
Right.
Even though it's not an official policy.
And some are already, some are really good at that. I know that say now, like as they drive over the bridge, everyone right now, text your parent, like we will be there in 10 minutes, and then put it away. So things like that. I think if we, if the school sets the tone about what our expectations are and how the students are, what, how we see them being responsible with technology, and the time they spend together really should be spent as a team. And those are great opportunities for team building and relationships and friendships, and it's not, it's not the time to be on your device. So we'll make that clear.
I just had one question about the, reading about like the earbuds, so no earbuds in school, and that the school will provide headphones to every student? Is that-
So we have, we have so many, we actually have, we have so many headphones used for various reasons. So MCAS testing, a lot of students have access to that. And then in all of our world language classes, we have those, the computer science classes, we have headphones. So if, if a student needs it for curriculum or for the lesson, the teacher will, has, has headphones available. The issue with the individual ones is that they then are connected to something.
Okay. So those won't be allowed at all?
No.
They'll be something wired or whatever?
That's right. We can provide the headphones if, if the teacher needs them on, on the Chromebook. Right.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
I have a question around the phones and after-school activities. So I'm looking at, just, I'm just scanning, because it was the first time I'd looked at it, the high school STEM Academy, actually, I don't even know if this is current, because it's still STEM Academy, the Athletics Handbook. And there is a section in it that talks about kind of responsibility, expectations of behavior. It doesn't, you know, it, it's focused a lot around being in the presence of alcohol, that kind of zero tolerance, talks about kind of taunting in the game and sportsmanship, but there isn't really any, again, I don't know if I'm looking at the right-
I don't think you are, because we, I, I think Sean reached out today to Bryce Harper, because there was one that was outdated, connected on via maybe the overall district website? Is that where you-
A quick Google search.
Okay. But there isn't, there is one more relevant.
And does that make more reference to bullying in particular, or acceptable, I'm thinking, you know, phone use in terms of just a general acceptable use policy?
Right. We have that, yeah, we do have the acceptable use. And I do know when you've registered your child for, for participation in sports, you do have to go through and read and follow information regarding that, those policies. Some of those as well, we reached out to Sean to update and to match these new policies, the, the new language that we're putting in the handbook for uniformity and universal kind of approach, even at the other schools as well. It would be helpful if it's all consistent.
And is part of that, part of the review that's done, I assume you still do the sports nights where people have to go and, for every sport, to listen to things about concussions and et cetera, is bullying a, I know hazing's a part of it.
Yeah, the sportsmanship part is a part of that, that presentation. So I know the athletic director meets with all of the families and the student athletes, and that will be happening in, in September, once the tryout periods are, are kind of organized and settled. That meeting will happen, and so they have time with the athletic director, and then they break off as well with their individual coaches. So we, we, and we will be there at that opening one to talk about that, about behavior and expectations, good citizenship, sportsmanship, participation, and, and all of that, kind of that character building.
Awesome. The last part was, I think, part of, and again, the older handbook, and I don't know if that's an update, is saying that the, it's responsibility of coach to determine if a violation has happened. Is there a switch in that? Again, we have many coaches who are not necessarily trained as part of employees of the school system or necessarily the bullying legislation and implications and all that. Is that, is that still at the discretion of a coach to decide?
I would say no on that, given that, that we're trying to empower students as well to come forward and report and to, for that kind of open communication for, for students, for anyone actually, to, to kind of intervene and, and report. So I, I, I do think that might be, just because of the reference of STEM Academy, that that may not be the most updated. But again, like I, I think the student handbook should mirror the, the language in the, the Athletic Handbook, so, so it's all consistent.
Thank you.
And that's what Sean reached out to Bryce today to update all that?
He reached out to, yes, to address that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comment for Ms. Nelson?
You have a policy on alcohol in the school?
So yes, alcohol would be a controlled substance. So alcohol, tobacco, absolutely not allowed, narcotics not allowed in any public school or on the premises of-
Oh, not even on the premises of the-
That's correct.
Right. So if they, that is confiscated, if they, if they go out with them, they don't get that back, right?
Exactly. Yes.
Unlike the cell phone, which they do get back.
Yes. Yep.
Are we ready to vote on the changes? Now, I guess my thought is, because each one of these things are really critical areas, it might be useful for us to take an individual vote on each policy, so, or, or do we want to do it as one?
I would, I would recommend, you know, we've had the discussion, I didn't hear any objections to anything. If you as chair don't object, I'd say we just do it as one.
So that essentially we are voting and that's the understanding of the vote is that there is consensus?
Okay.
And I have a motion to approve the changes in the hand, uh, Middle High School Handbook as noted in the document.
I move that we approve the updates to the Sandwich Middle High School Student Family Handbook as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All in favor, it passes seven-zero. Thank you very much to you and all your colleagues for all the work on this, and to the family input and everything that got us to this place. So, good luck.
I wouldn't go far, I think you could be right back here.
You're staying there. Principal Nelson?
I think you get to come back. I will just say, other topics not unreasonably anticipated by the chair, I have none. So under new business, this is exciting news, spring twenty twenty-four AP results, Principal Nelson?
So these are, these are wonderful results, and you'll get to see the progression over the past five years, but we had a highly successful twenty twenty-four AP testing session. So number of AP students tested one hundred and ninety-one, the mean score was a three point five, and eighty-one percent of those tested received a three or a high, higher. So the tests, for anyone who doesn't know, AP tests, you can score one, two, three, four, five is the top score. So for students to receive a three or higher, that's, that's amazing. And colleges will accept those tests that are high for college credit at some institutions. So it can be economically beneficial for the family to have a student score that high. This is just a breakdown of the subject tested, the number of exams in that subject, the mean score, and the percent of students who scored three, four, or five.
Jean, on the psychology, it seems to be the lowest scores. Is there any thought about why this is so?
So that, so that's listed twice, actually, but psychology is a, is a really, really popular AP class for students. We have open enrollment, which means we do not have a prerequisite for students to sign up to take an AP class. AP psychology is a class where so many students want to try it as their first AP. So if you look at that number, twenty-seven students, because it may be their first taste of an AP, and so, so really we're encouraging that. So even though that percent may be lower, it, it's, it's teaching them essentially, what is an AP? What is a college-level class? How do I do it? How do I manage it? And it could be the, the stepping stone to more APs in the future. And it could be the, the stepping stone to more APs in the future.
And I think there's strong research out there that students who take AP tests persist and persist to success in graduation.
Right.
Even one.
Right. Yeah.
If you could back up real quick. I, I have no specifics on this year, these tests. I do know they do publish, like, all AP tests are not created equal essentially, that sometimes certain ones get graded a little bit harder than others, that the percentage of, it's not like every, um, subject, you know, whatever, you know, eighty percent get three or higher. Some are harder than others.
Okay. As an ex AP chemistry teacher, I'm on team Kevin on that one. I can tell you AP chemistry is a remarkably difficult, uh, AP test. So I'm not exactly a math scholar here, but seeing that the numbers are easy six, that indicates that, you know, five of our six kiddos that took it, um, got ahead of qualifying score of three or higher. So there's a lot of success stories. We wanted to push this data out, realize it comes out around July fourteenth, give or take. Um, there's additional data that we will share at a later meeting. They haven't published the statewide data. Typically when we report this data out, we take a look at how Sandwich High School did versus Massachusetts, versus globally. Plus there, uh, we'll be announcing who the AP scholars are. If you recall, they have AP scholar and AP scholar with honor designations for kids who took multiple AP tests and scored four or higher and so on. Plus the, a, a statistic that we're particularly proud of, but I, you know, I'm, I'm dying to see the numbers for the class of twenty-four, which I think was a really strong class. What percentage of the kids that graduated during their four-year experience took at least one AP class? I remember the numbers for the class of twenty-three were something like seventy-one percent. So, um, I, I'm a big believer and I, I know Jeannie feels the same way. When it comes to AP, you don't put up roadblocks, you don't put up prerequisites because, you know, the old expression, a high tide raises all boats. When you give this opportunity to multiple kids, more often than not, they reach, they, they reach the, the target, so to speak. So I think there's a lot of success stories here.
Well, last comment I'll make is if you look back at Calc BC, that was done through virtual high school. And I think the key to success there, I know the chem teacher's going to say it was an easy test, but that group of kids as a cohort really treated themselves as a class and studied together and it probably led to that result.
Do we get feedback from our graduates when they go off to college? I mean, AP courses clearly, content wise, assessment wise, rigor, all of that, clearly college level. But it's over an entire academic year. A typical college course is fifteen weeks long. And now there are seven weeks, there are five weeks, there are three weeks, depending on the program. How do our students, do tran, how does that translate to college success when the schedule is much more compressed and accelerated, if you will?
So I've had the opportunity to be in Sandwich for twenty-three years in the classroom and in various capacities, and there's so much anecdotal, um, evidence that points towards the success and the preparation that students have had in college, whether it comes from parents, um, letters to teachers, letters to their AP teachers. Mr. Russo, who does our AP English, he gets flooded in September and October, November with thank you so much, I feel so prepared. Uh, as a Sandwich parent, my, I, my daughter entered college with six credits based on AP. So done, completed. So you can, you, you can collect that data, um, informally, but it definitely exists.
And another stakeholder group would be alums, right?
Right.
For our conversations.
Right.
Thank you.
We had had a discussion at some point in the past two years around, um, covering the cost of AP tests, around ninety, a hundred dollars, something like that still. Um, is that something that we included in this year's budget or no? I know it was a discussion point we had at one point, probably when you were presented these results last year.
I think it came up a year ago in looking at the twenty twenty-three AP scores. I know for this year in the FY twenty-five budget is not covered.
Financial assistance is available?
Of course. Yeah, as always. Right. Finally, the last slide shows you, um, kind of the progression over the last five years for Sandwich Middle High School and AP testing. So we are definitely trending in the right direction, um, with participation and with success. So a perfect combination of exactly what you would want to see with an AP program.
I would know, um, I, I think Jeannie's right on target as far as the upward trend. Twenty twenty is a little bit of an outlier.
Twenty twenty-one, really?
Uh, no, twenty twenty, twenty twenty, all AP exams nationwide were administered at home virtually.
Yeah.
Because that's when we were home. So, um, there, there's.
Scoring was skewed.
There's a lot of metrics there that it, it probably didn't have the same rigor of scoring.
Okay.
Than it did typically.
I'm looking at twenty twenty-one when that we were blended.
Yeah.
That's where I see that. So I misunderstood where you're going.
So if we're reporting it out internally, that twenty nineteen benchmark would probably be interesting to push in there.
True. Finally, I ha, I don't have it on a slide, but we do, we have sixty-seven of our students who are recognized as AP scholars. We have thirty-six AP scholars, um, eight AP scholars with honors and twenty-three AP scholars with distinction. So an AP scholar is a student who receives, who receives a score of three or, three or higher on three or more exams. So we have thirty-six students there. AP scholars with honors would be students who receive an average score of at least three point two five on all AP exams and scores of three or higher on four or more exams. We had eight of those students. And AP scholars with distinction, we had twenty-three, and that is granted to students who receive an average score of at least three point five on all AP exams and scores of three or higher on five or more exams. So that, that's really impressive information.
Outstanding. What a good way to kick off the new year.
Yes, it's great.
Anything else about this? Okay, we will. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Again, to the faculty and the students who endure. Next item, apparently we need to amend, uh, our twenty-four, twenty-five calendar, school committee calendar.
Yeah. So you've got before you two calendars that need amending. First is the school committee meeting calendar. Uh, there was just a simple error unfortunately in looking at the correct week of April vacation. So we didn't want a school committee meeting to fall during that week of April vacation. So as a result, we've altered the dates of the April, May and June school committee meetings, um, with, uh, the mindset of, you know, keeping them every two weeks. Um, I should know, and I don't know if this is a discussion, uh, if there's a desire to have this, but realize the meeting that we have planned on November sixth also coincides with the joint MASC, MASSS conference. That Wednesday is the, um, kind of the banquet that usually has a guest speaker and so on. So I put that out for consideration, uh, if there is any desire to move the date of that November sixth meeting.
I'm registered for the conference and I am not going to the evening meeting, so it doesn't affect me. Is anybody else going?
I imagine you're going.
You're going, aren't you?
I'm going and I believe Burt has signed up as well.
Okay. So that we need a superintendent or a designee.
Have Dr. Quinn pinch hit.
What is our pleasure?
I'd recommend we keep it as now and if people's, if people's schedules change where maybe we have a majority or a significant portion of the committee and we can reassess in, you know, September, October, or Dr. Quinn can pinch hit.
Do we want to go with, make a decision right now? It might be easy for all involved.
I'm happy with keeping it. I have no objections, but we can always evaluate.
To keep it. A poll.
I wouldn't change it now.
Keep it.
It'd be the first meeting I miss in five years, but that's fine.
Well, we, all we need is a quorum and so, all right. So, uh, I don't know, we have to vote the calendar change. Can I have a motion?
I'd make a motion that we approve the updated school committee meeting calendar as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Tracy seconds. Any discussion?
Only thing I was going to say is keeping two meetings in November is probably very much worthwhile because there's probably enough on that year-long agenda that would, that will fill it up. So.
I would agree. All in favor?
Aye.
We are using seven zero to change the calendar as proposed. All right. Next up.
And then the school calendar is very, very simple, very straightforward. It's a request to change the date that's delineated for the SMHS open house from Tuesday, the seventeenth to Thursday, the twelfth of September.
Which might be one of our nights that we do some stakeholder engagement.
Good point. Motion to approve?
I move that we approve the revised Sandwich Public Schools, school calendar, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five as presented.
Second. Second by Danielle. Any discussion? All in favor of changing the calendar?
Aye.
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 Seven zero approved. Okay. Thank you. Where are we next? Other topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair. Just one, um, Christine, uh, for professional reasons has to step away from the Cape Cod Collaborative Board, and so we need a representative. So don't jump right now. Think about it and, uh, we can talk about it and hopefully someone will come forward by our next meeting and make that change. So let's see. Next, subcommittee reports, the negotiations, subscommittee meeting. I will just say that on July second, we achieved tentative agreement with the SEA, Unit A teachers, uh, education support professionals, custodians, groundskeepers and administrative assistants. Um, and that was amazing that it was done in the period of time. Congratulations to the SEA membership, their negotiating committee, our negotiating committee and all of our administrators, Dr. Joe and our, Joe Emerson, our counsel, uh, for helping that, us accomplish that. So tonight, our major goal here is to ratify the successor contracts with Unit A, Unit B ESPs and the custodial and administrative assistant units. And we will, we will vote on that. Um, Joe?
Yeah. So, um, I, I'd like to, uh, echo what Sue just said. I think, um, it was a, a very collaborative and respectful process. Hats off to Sue, Burt and Danielle, uh, our three members of the negotiation subcommittee. I think, uh, what really we've, we've come to consensus on is, uh, a very reasonable, fiscally responsible, uh, contracts with all of the units, but also really recognizes the value of the remarkable, um, work that happens each and every day across our district and really respects our teachers, respects our professional staff, respects, um, our support staff. So I think it's important just to kind of, um, give a high level overview of what, um, some of the key points are as far as what was negotiated with each of the associations. Starting with our teachers, uh, the first piece is the compensation. So for all of these contracts, it is a three-year contract. Um, so for this coming FY twenty-five, it is a cost of living adjustment of two percent. And then for the following two years, FY twenty-six and FY twenty-seven, it's a three point two five percent COLA for each year. Some of, uh, the exchange in that is also, uh, adding an additional hour on a monthly basis of provision of after-school help for our students. And then also, uh, some language that supports, um, kind of a baseline of updating the information in the Power School Family Portal as far as assignments and grades, uh, at least every ten school days. And then also establishing an annual cap of eighty thousand dollars for, uh, the reimbursement of courses that, uh, teachers take as well. With regard to the ESPs, um, compensation structure is a little bit different because they're hourly employees. Um, what we've done is we've combined a couple of the different categories, uh, that folks are in. We've gone from four categories down to three. With the folks that, um, provide, um, kind of that direct contact with our students, there is a COLA for this current, this current FY twenty-five of one dollar per hour, the same for FY twenty-six, and then for FY twenty-seven, uh, it is a two dollar per hour COLA. For, um, category three, which is the category that is kind of like the tech ESP, um, it is mirrors very much the teachers, FY twenty-five, a two percent COLA, and then FY twenty-six and twenty-seven, a three point two five percent COLA. We've also increased the longevity, uh, payments that people who've been with us for quite a while have, starting in year two of the contract, it increases to, uh, twelve hundred a year after ten years, fifteen hundred a year after fifteen years, and then two thousand a year after twenty years. Uh, with regard to our admin assistants, it's a very, very similar structure that we use for the ESPs as far as the compensations. It's a COLA of one dollar per hour, uh, in FY twenty-five, and then in FY twenty-six also one dollar per hour, and then FY twenty-seven, two dollars per hour. Same increases to the longevity that I just pointed out with regard to our ESPs. As far as our custodians, again, same attack, compensation, COLA structure, FY twenty-five, one dollar per hour COLA, uh, FY twenty-six also one dollar per hour, and then FY twenty-seven, two dollars per hour. We're also increasing for any, uh, of our folks that may be on the second shift, a increase in the paid shift differential to one fifty per hour, uh, in addition to, uh, from the one twenty-five. And then also kind of recognizing some of our maintenance folks that have licenses, think folks like plumbers or electricians and kind of recognizing the work that they do and the expertise. We've increased the differential for these maintenance employees from two dollars per hour to five dollars per hour to stay competitive. And then, um, the same longevity increases that we had for the ESPs and the admin assistants, we've also, uh, had in place for the custodians. And then there, a, as I know in the background memo, um, we had some provision across all bargaining units, um, one being that you've probably heard across the state, um, in having provision of paid parental leave upon the birth or, uh, adoption of a child, we've, we're now providing two weeks of. We've, we're now providing two weeks of paid parental leave in those cases across all of our units. We also did some language cleanup to ensure that all four units have common language regarding compensation during jury duty, and then also language to provide protection and continuation and pay in the event that employee has a personal injury that is a result of an interaction with student where it's not of the fault of the employee in the course of duties of the job. So that's kind of like the high-level overview. The four units of the SEA did ratify their respective agreements a little bit more than a week ago, back on July 29.
Is this a public document?
Yes, it is.
Can I have a motion to approve, ratify the four memoranda of agreement with the Sandwich Education Association?
I can make a motion to ratify the four memorandums of agreement between the Sandwich School Committee and the Sandwich Education Association.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
I got a couple of questions. Lot of moving parts to all this. What's, when you boil it all down, what is the increased cost to the district? And to that, I know we allocated in our budget for this. How did that balance out?
Sure. So through this, through last winter and spring, when we took a look at all of the scheduled employees, we budgeted, total salaries was $29,639,290. In actually looking at these increases and the COLAs and actually plugging in with the employees that we will have, the actual amount came out to be $29,856,881. So the delta is actually $217,591. I'm not terribly concerned about that for a couple of reasons. The district does have a couple key sources to draw down on. Within the last two weeks, the state budget was finally finalized. We've picked up about an additional $165,000 in Chapter 70 funding that will be coming to the district. And a second piece, we can make up that additional gap of approximately $50,000 through the drawdown of circuit breaker funds that we have in reserve.
I had a question, a quick one, too, if you don't mind, Kevin. Now, what's our total FTE entering the new school year as opposed to last year?
So as far as teaching force, we finished last school year with 239 FTEs, and as we had in our budget, we will be entering with 233, so six fewer.
Again, a lot of moving parts. So how do, the new contracts, each one has a salary table, and as Bert questioned, these are all public documents, so anybody can go look at them. How do they compare with our peers? Either other, similar-sized communities are really, it's really a bit more, I think, regional, because it's, the costs are associated with the Cape. Where do we stand as, you know, compared to the other towns in our surrounding area?
We did tremendous benchmarking, and again, I think the negotiations subcommittee deserves a lot of kudos in the many strategy sessions that they did. And kind of starting at square one with regard to our teachers, kind of looked extensively, we prescribe, subscribed, rather, to a service that does, keeps all of the data as far as the salary grids for virtually every single district across the Commonwealth. When it came to the Cape and the Islands, Sandwich was on, I would characterize, our pay in the lower third of kind of looking at 10 benchmark districts. So I think we, to stay competitive, we had to have offers on the table that brought us to at least kind of the median. And with this successor contract, I think it does exactly that. So, you know, the short answer is extensive benchmarking was done, particularly in looking at the Cape, and we also looked, you know, Plymouth, Middleborough, Wareham as well. And I think this keeps us competitive.
One last, or one more, if I may, from my colleagues. Kind of in the similar vein, we're not the only town that's negotiating this year. I just did the quick math, the two, three and a half, three and a half, that works out to 9.2% increase over three years, because obviously the 3.5 builds on the two. How does that compare with other towns that have renegotiated recently?
I mean, I think there's a range, but I would put them in the category of somewhere between eight to 10, eight to 10 and a half percent COLAs over a three-year span. That's where the market is.
Okay.
Other questions, discussions, comments? Are we ready?
I'll just comment. I said this because we did discuss about these in executive session beforehand, and every time we've talked about this in executive session, I thank my colleagues who serve on this committee, this subcommittee, somewhat selfishly so I don't have to, but there's a ton of work that goes into to get here, both as a subcommittee and then in all the negotiating process. I can't imagine how many hours, so I just wanted to publicly say thank you.
Any other comments?
You should join it next time, Kevin. It's a lot of fun.
I will point out that we had our numbers people and contract people at the table. Monica, outstanding, helping us to see the reality in all the, in all the numbers, and Michelle as well. Monica from the HR, she knows, I think she's got all the collective bargaining agreements memorized, because she could come up with chapter and section on a dime. And Joe for his wisdom and just, just knowledge. And this is where the experience of your superintendent is so important. He knows people. And so his relationships with peers across the state, and also, I think, credibility with the SEA leadership and creating trust, that's what makes this happen, and that's, that's how we work. So thank you again to the administration and to Joe Emerson, counsel. It's good humor and the discussion and ways to take a tense situation and lighten, lighten things. It's just, it makes it a good experience. So are we prepared to vote? I'd like us to do a roll call vote on this. I think it's important. All in favor of approving and ratifying the four SEA agreements by roll call. Tracy? Kaylee?
Aye.
Christine?
Aye.
Bert?
Yes?
Danielle?
Aye.
Aye.
Sue?
Aye.
So we are unanimous, 7-0, in ratifying this collective bargaining agreement. Thank you all. Next on the agenda, liaison advisory committee reports. We had the negotiations subcommittee report.
Just a quick one on the Cape Cod Collaborative Liaison. As Sue said, I'll need to step down from that role, just with a professional conflict I have. But to update the committee, the Cape Cod Collaborative has recently replaced their Director of Special Education Services, their Waypoint Program Director. The Waypoint Program is a program for students with intensive social, emotional, behavioral needs. And Paul Hilton, who has been the Executive Director, is also leaving. There's currently a search going on for his replacement as well.
Lots of changes.
Lots of changes.
Any chances the night of the meeting might change to other than Wednesday?
No, I did, I did try that. At the last meeting, I tried to do a survey of all the school committee meeting dates of all the member districts, and it was, it was a no-go, but maybe, maybe it will change with a new director. There are, there are other districts in the same situation who have a lot of overlapping meetings.
Thank you, Christine, for your service to that collaborative board, and good luck in your new endeavor.
Thank you.
Warrants.
Real quick on the committee reports. It's really subcommittee, but we can do this offline, but we probably need to get our, get the band back together from the policy subcommittee side and start that up in September, so we don't lose traction we were making in the spring.
Good point. And just to wind in, Dr. Moos checks, that we look at the Title IX changes first and then proceed with your schedule through the manual.
Nothing better than Section J. I make a motion that we approve the warrant as presented and signed by a majority of the committee.
Second. Did you, Tracy did, I'm sorry. Okay, we have a second. Any discussion? I will just say, kind of follow-up on our discussion at our workshop. I went in yesterday to do a kind of cursory review of selected items, documentation to go with the warrant. And one of the first things I realized was that there were not double signatures on some of the purchase orders. So, is it Lynette?
Lindsay.
Lindsay, Lindsay. I chatted with Lindsay, and she said that that is an issue that everyone is working on, and they are making great progress. And at some point, very, very soon, purchase orders will be shipped back to their originator without the double signatures. And so it was interesting that we had the conversation about that, and I kind of did top of the pile, middle of the pile, and bottom of the pile, and it was pretty consistent throughout. So I think congratulations to the business office for taking the bull by the horns, if it will, and working on that issue, because compliance is key.
One of the issues is the software only imprints Joe's signature.
Interesting. So, and then kudos to Lindsay. She was very patient with me as I asked questions on that, and I applaud members of the committee who, as we take this fiduciary responsibility very seriously in terms of checking all of this out. So our second public forum, does anybody wish to be heard at public forum? Nobody? Okay, so we, public forum is closed.
The floor is crowded.
What did I do?
We didn't, I made a motion that we didn't actually vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Motion's still on the floor, so.
So we seconded it. We discussed it. All in favor?
Aye.
7-0 approved.
What happens when you get into the third hour?
Okay, so in view of that, does anybody wish to be heard at public forum? No? Okay, we will move on. Future agenda items. I think we are proceeding with our annual plan, and I think, we had a couple of other things, but I don't have them in front of me tonight, but we will.
I just want to confirm, I did hear, we're going to hear everything that facilities did on their summer vacation on the next meeting? Okay, thank you.
Right. Acknowledgements, closing remarks.
Just because you were talking about Lindsay and how helpful she is, I mean, she's fabulous. She is there to answer any questions, clarification, and I feel like I need to say that out loud because she's very helpful.
Did you have some?
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge the school committee sluggers that competed this weekend in the Colby-Lippincott Memorial Football Tournament. It was, it was such a great community event. It was so nice to see the Lippincott families with smiles on their faces, and I really wanted to acknowledge Nancy Horwood, Jeff Duffney, Nicole Alexander, and everyone else that I may have forgotten for organizing this great event. It was, it was a beautiful day on Sunday, and we had a lot of fun. And thank you to Christine for making us T-shirts. It was a team event all around. It was great.
And I just want to, again, thank Ms. Lawson for, and I challenge the committee that we all, if you have not already, made a donation to that wonderful effort. Do what you need to do in your own time, but I plan to, because that was wonderful.
If I, if I may, just Danielle was more eloquent than I would be, but I would just also acknowledge everyone that was involved, not just Ms. Horwood, but also many of the students that were involved. A number of students spoke about their classmate. It was an unspeakable tragedy that led us to be there, but it was one of those events that was good to, good for the soul to be part of, and I think they intend to make it an annual event, which I think will be a wonderful thing, so.
It was overwhelmingly kids, and I know if Nancy and Jeff were here, they would say this was all totally kid-driven. So it was wonderful. Hats off to my teammates. I think we fought a good fight, but let's not kid ourselves. We got our butts kicked by sixth graders, okay?
That's great. Anything else for the good of the order? Motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn to our next regular business meeting of August 28, 2024, at 6:00 PM, right here in Sandwich Town Hall.
Second. Second by Christine. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, 7-0. Thank you, everyone. Good evening.